Call the order, the town council study session for Thursday, November 16th. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mike Arilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Jerry Swetze is absent. Mike Schilling.
Here.
Joe Wizwati.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
All right, item three, study session discussion items. Item A is the Lake Hills Dam Inspection.
Thank you, this one is pretty straightforward. The dam at Lake Hills was there when it was a golf course. And then when it turned into subdivision, it sounds like it was taken over by the town. Built like, I think in the 1920s. Since it is a functional dam and holds back water, it is re-
Want me to start over? It is required to be inspected every two years. So it does have to be inspected this calendar year. I do have it scheduled and ready to go. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. That is just the pass through from the, I mean, I got it as low as I could get it.
Is the inspection all done now? Is it all, or?
No, no, I-
When's it have to be done? By the end of the year?
It has to be done by November 30th. And the reports has to do, has to be due to the IDNR within 60 days of it being inspected. We are on schedule as long as we get approved.
Nice. Any questions on the dam inspection?
No, but I have a question on Lake Hills of that. I know it's not exactly the same thing, but maybe it's, you know, it comes off. So I had some of the HOA people reach out to me about the stop signs in Lake Hills and who pays for them. Would you guys know who pays for the stop signs? Is it the HOA or is it town? Who pays for the stop signs in subdivision like Lake?
I can look that up and, do they maintain all the roads?
No, I don't think so. I think the town maintains the roads.
Yeah, I don't know why they would maintain. I mean, if it was HOA that maintained everything, you know, like a pri- fully private, like a Briar Ridge or something like that, they would maintain everything, but-
Not true. Are they decorative?
That's their-
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Like, do they have a little border around your stop signs?
Yes.
I don't, not sure.
I think they do, but-
They stop signs, I mean-
Maybe that's what it is then.
Not sure.
If they have a border around them, your HOA, like in the gates, the HOA?
So if they're, so if they're not plain-
Standard.
Each one pays for them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but if they're plain, the town pays for them.
That's what it sounds like. I'd have to look at the, you know, the covenants, you have to dig-
Can we double check that to make sure?
I will see what I can find.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's a good, thank you, excellent.
Yeah, that'd be something to look into because as subdivisions come in, some subdivisions have it in there where they take care of it, some of them have it where they don't. So it all depends on, each subdivision comes in with a different set of, you know-
Rules.
Covenants. But that was an early on, so let's look, look into it. All right, item B, striker ambulance cots, use of ARPA funds. This will take a resolution. Go.
So you guys have a copy of the striker cot invoice for the two cots. These are through the Sourcewell that we were looking to purchase. We weren't expecting these until 2024, but here they are. So the option we have is to use the ARPA funds for $55,305.75 to cover those.
Is there an option to not take them till next year? When are we going to have it in the budget?
No.
That's not an option. Okay.
Any discussions?
And it's just a question of needs and wants.
Well, this is, this is definitely-
So it'll help for somebody that's heavy to put, you know, it collapses quicker, but what are they going to do with the old ones? The old ones that they're going to replace?
Um, that's a good question. I don't have an answer for you, but I will for, for next week for sure. I don't know if they're-
Is there a trade in there?
I don't know if they're going to be doing a trade in there. I don't, I don't know that to be certain.
Is there such a thing as a trade?
Well, that's just it, you're buying-
Those are old cots.
Yeah, used equipment.
And they're probably wore out.
It would be nice to know what they're doing with the old ones.
Yeah, I'll find out for sure. I actually didn't even consider asking Kevin what he was going to do with the old cots, but if they were going to keep those as a backup or something like that, so.
Or if they're even worth keeping, who knows?
It may not be.
How long ago did they order them? Do you know?
Gosh, it was, it's been a while.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Item C, St. John Commons Discussion.
So just to give everyone a quick update, so on the timeline for this. So November 29th, the Economic Development Commission will be holding a meeting to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the financing documents, EDC report, and adopt a resolution approving the creation of the economic development target area. Also that same day, the 29th, the RDC will hold a special meeting on the residential housing. So the RDC will also approve the declaratory resolution and the economic development plan for the new economic development area for the St. John Commons. This will be immediately followed by a special town council meeting where the town council will consider on first reading the target area ordinance and also consider on first reading the bond ordinance for the St. John Commons. On December 6th, the Plan Commission will adopt the Plan Commission order approving the declaratory resolution and plan. On December 7th, the town council will hold yet another special meeting to adopt the resolution approving the Plan Commission order and will adopt on second reading the target area ordinance and adopt on second reading the bond ordinance. On December 18th, the RDC will hold a special meeting to hold a public hearing on the declaratory resolution and plan. They will adopt the confirmatory resolution confirming the declaratory resolution and plan and will also approve a resolution pledging TIF to the EDC and TIF bonds. So that's what's going on with the St. John Commons.
What is the percentage, so for that deal, do you know what the percentage?
I want to say that was the, the, I don't want to, I really don't want to say definitively, but I believe it was at 60/40.
That's what I thought it was.
60/40.
I didn't want to say it, but I wanted to let you go first.
Yeah, I think we did, we did finalize that. And that will be before the council on the 29th, I think.
Is it a residential TIF or is it a business TIF?
It is, it's both. So it's commercial and residential.
Or half and half.
Because it's a mix.
It's a whole TIF, yeah. The way it was originally done, Wayne, was, was just set up as a commercial. And I'm like, we've got to get the residential captured in there.
Because it was 13, yeah, 13 cottage homes.
So you're actually able to, you're able to capture all the cottage homes as well?
Yes.
And it's not like a senior citizen TIF, it's a regular residential TIF?
Residential TIF. So they changed the legislation recently so where all the new subdivisions, and this is something that we really should be considering-
Yes.
On those new subdivisions, so we can capture that money for public safety or whatever else, you know, we may need for that.
So a residential TIF, does that mean like the school doesn't get any of the money?
Um, that's a very good question.
Or is it, or is it a smaller percentage?
They get, they get money per head-
They've already gotten the enhanced part, I guess.
Well, they get zero of, they get zero of the increment.
They get it from the state, don't they?
But they still lose zero of the increment, yes.
They get zero of the increment in a residential area, so interesting.
Yeah, it would impact the schools for sure. If, if, if-
Old schools and probably the county.
Did residential TIFs like that, yeah. And the county as well, yeah.
County, right, yeah, county.
Library too.
Anybody but the town?
Township.
There's what, five, five people? I just went and paid my bill, or my tax bill last Tuesday, so.
Yeah, it was due November 10th.
Thank you.
November 13th.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, you said you were out of money, so I wanted to go refill the fund.
Hey, thank you.
I did the same, I'd help refill it as well.
Thank you.
Good. All right, any other discussion? Nothing? All right, move on to the interlocal government agreement with Lake County Bridge Joliet Street Project.
So you have a copy of the intergovernmental agreement before you. The Lake County is already committed $926,000 to change the existing culvert on Joliet Street over the St. John ditch. This project's been going on for several years. They've been working on this. So what the town would like to do is add the additional traffic lane into this project as this is basically your one in 50 to 100-year opportunity to do that. Because you're not going to replace this, you know, anytime in the near future.
Right.
The additional amount for the town's portion of this project would be $354,750 as part of the interlocal. Lake County would be the lead agency on the project. The town of St. John would commit and contribute $354,750 to the county by December 20th to get this project completed so that the county can get the RFP on this project and let bids on it. This project was considered as part of the original ARPA request. So I'm making a recommendation that we use those funds if we were going to move forward on it. We would have to have a resolution prepared for the town council's next meeting. So we can meet that December 20th deadline.
So what's the reason for the third lane? It says in here, "St. John has agreed to pay the additional cost for the construction of the redesign and the additional lane estimated at cost of $354,750." You also have, you also have an industrial park that's going in there. So are we going to help the developer with that?
It's not just helping the developer, I think it's for the future of the town. As the town does grow, I'm hoping at some point they consider widening or putting a third lane in so that you have a proper turn lane and navigating over tracks and stuff like that too.
Is there any way of trying to convince somebody else to pay the $354? Can we get Lake County to pay more? I mean, it's very generous of them.
They're already paying a million.
Almost a million, right, it's pretty nice of them.
Well, they're paying the-
Would you like us to go yell at them, Wayne?
They're paying the million dollars because that's, they're in, Lake County's in charge of the bridges.
Why would you say that, Mike? I'm just asking a question, I'm not trying to be smart.
I was asking too, I was asking.
I'm just saying, you, you have a development coming in, and if they're going to use that, that widened part to turn in there, then they should maybe pay part of this.
Or, yeah, or some, them or somebody else, right? We should, who else is on that list?
If you, if you look back on the, on the bottom of this page in section three, it says the prod, the $354,750 has to be paid before December 20th. This year, I mean, where's, where's-
Let's try to get some better terms.
Where's the, where's the money going to come from?
Exactly. Well, I said the ARPA, right?
Well, okay, but we keep going to the, the well, it's going to run dry.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, but the ARPA money was already set aside for this project a year ago.
Wasn't it?
Well, it was, it was part of the project.
Wayne, would you prefer not to have a third lane in a bike path?
Well, and- Well, they can have the bike path, but then I heard rumors that they didn't want to do a bike path.
Well, I'm just asking you, you don't want to have the bike path or the third lane?
I like the bike path, but I don't like, as a taxpayer, if they're going to put a development in there.
I don't want to pay for either, I like it for free.
Here's the thing, so with respect to that, I mean, you know, it's, it's not, within the next few years, you're going to have additional traffic on that road anyway, whether you have that developed or not. So the more traffic you actually put onto that road, the more capacity you're going to need on that.
But you're making a third lane there between the tracks or right there by Hack Cemetery, but you go over the tracks and you go east, you're back down to a two-lane road, so.
But at some point, maybe they will widen it. I mean, maybe not, not in our lifetime.
And then to put a path across the railroad, that, that costs a lot of money too. I'm not against any path, but the, the deal with the railroad, that can take another five, 10 years.
No doubt about it.
Well, that, that bridge is better since the 1920s. You can go down there and look at the railroad ties that they used to put it up.
And, and, and you bring that up too, but if you go down just east of Parkway or, or west of Parkway, the same type of bridge and the same type of road, for the town to fix that, the guy hit that embankment for, had no insurance, $600,000 to make that better. So you just want to point all that stuff out, then you try and make the right decision.
Well, yeah, I don't know if that the guy hitting the bridge has anything to do with this decision, but yeah.
But it's the same road, same type of structure, that's my point.
Yeah, it's not a third lane area.
And nobody wants to touch that, so.
Yeah, well, it's money for sure.
Right, yeah.
There's definitely a common denominator there.
Did county execute this?
They won't execute it until after we do. That's what I was told.
But they'll execute it before they expect us to pay them money?
I would think so, yeah. That's why they were like, are you guys going to get this done? Yeah.
Well, when we, yeah, we should probably know that, I can't imagine it not, but maybe just make sure. Yeah, it's a piece of the puzzle, we have growth, what are you going to do? You need bigger rooms.
All right, any other discussion? Next, Plan Commission, BZA considerations.
So, so these, these two items, so there's a permanent utility easement agreement with Streamside and Palmyra SJ LLC, and then the other one is for Streamside and Palmyra LLC. So there's two different entities that the agreements entail. This is for the, the portion of White Oak Avenue just south of 109th Avenue on the east side of the road. And this just accepts that as a utility easement and drainage ditch.
Any discussion?
And that's where they're going to put a proposed roundabout?
Well, at the intersection, but that's not taking any consideration.
When, when, when are they going to decide to do the roundabout?
It probably wouldn't happen until 2027, construction 26 possibly.
Where's that money coming from?
Well, we were taking a look at road impact fees for that.
I think there was a, a decision that says you, one decision that says you can, one says you can't, so where do we stand on that?
Not a decision we're making tonight.
No, I'm just asking.
I know, more decision one way or the other. All right, moving on, Resolution 23, 1121, transfer resolution to Community Events Fund. Go.
So this is transferring a total of $18,345 from both the General Fund and the Park Operating Fund to the Community Events Fund.
I thought it was 18,000 twice, which would be 36,000.
18,000 to the General Fund, 18,000 to be transferred to the Park Operations.
I'm sorry, you're, you're correct.
And what happened to the fund that we have to give it some more money or a boost?
There are not enough funds in the, the Community Events Fund.
So where, where did that money go to for community events? Was that something earlier, like 4th of July or?
It would have been your 4th of July Boo Bash, I believe, as well, as well as any other, other summer events.
We spent that much?
Do we have a budget or a spending relative to last year or this year, 22 to 23? You know, and those funds, coming out of those funds? Is this because the money was not put in those funds from the beginning and the spending was similar? Or is the spending way up? Do we know what it is?
Well, Community Events Fund is unfunded, correct? So there's really no funds unless you raise the funds. So whatever the difference is in what you raise versus what your expenses are, this is the difference for those.
And is the spending out of these funds the same as it was last year and the year before?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it was, it was different. I think it's actually, we're probably putting in, I think, a little bit less than we did last year.
Could we, could we get, could maybe just get, just for us clear, is this just, is this a different way of doing it? Or is this overspending out of the funds? You know, or is it not overspending and this, this was no balance, I guess? That's all I'm looking to understand.
Well, the, the money for the, the part, the Community Events is, is basically, it's, it's not a, whatever you were to budget in there, there's no funds to offset those costs. So it's either by donations or fundraising or whatever. But if there's not enough funds in those, those, in the Community Events Fund, then there has to be a transfer to offset those because you have, you have to zero it out.
But also, that's probably one of those funds, I don't know, you correct me if I'm wrong, you don't want to budget too much in there because then they'll use it all up anyways. So it's better to come with an additional-
You started the year with zero and then you spent out of the fund. So-
What did we do last year? Did we spend, start with zero?
You started with, if I had to estimate, and again, I'm doing this from memory, you started with maybe 1,500.
Almost zero. Great, and then you know what the spending was last year, right?
Not off the top of my head. Last year you only did Freedom Fest. And then there were various other events that were held out of my office, but those all made money plus some, but I'm talking a little bit of money, we're talking a craft. But whatever we did, that's how we got to 1,500, by doing little craft projects. So this year you used the fund for Freedom Fest, Boo Bash, Movies in the Park.
Yeah, right. So we didn't, so we didn't use, we certainly had Boo Bash and Movies in the Park last year, so we didn't use this fund to pay for those events last year?
You used park money to do Boo Bash and Movies in the Park the previous year.
And then, so how come we're changing funds this year versus last year?
I wondered the same thing.
Do you have an answer to that, Joe? Why are we using different funds?
Don't have an answer for that.
So the spending is somewhat similar because this is, we've had Freedom Fest or 4th of July and some of these other things? Or is it way up? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
Boo Bash was way up and Movies in the Park was way up.
Do you know what the difference, do we have any kind of a sense of that?
Well, you had, we had one movie in the park the previous year, well, two actually, because you guys ended up doing a fall, another Fall One. And then this year you guys had, I don't know how many, quite a few. And then Boo Bash was up quite a bit too. But I, I could pull your Boo Bash numbers if you'd like that. I have Freedom Fest on. I sent, I can send you the link.
Okay, that would be great, and maybe-
But I did not do a comparison of Boo Bash.
And is this anticipating spending for, for Christmas in the park as well? Or is that something that'll have to be transferred in the future?
Christmas in the park has its own fund.
So it, no?
No.
All right, any other questions on that?
Who's asking for this anyways? Is this, is this our center?
Well, we, we need to balance out the fund.
You need, yeah.
It's got to be zeroed out.
Zero, well.
So I guess, why was money coming out of these funds this year for similar things when it was coming out of different funds last year? I guess, what's the difference? Why, why, what's, why are we doing it this way?
I questioned it the whole time. I've said from the beginning that you should not have set a budget for this fund over what you had in the balance. I've made that argument from day one.
How, how do we spend money out of a fund that we don't have any money in?
That's what I asked, and I believe I received written communication from somebody sitting up here that you guys were going to raise the money this year. You were expecting you were going to raise the money to support the budget, and that clearly did not happen.
Well, but this, it was simply just in last year spent out of a different fund?
No, Freedom Fest was, was paid out of this fund last year. You guys did a transfer last year.
So, and then, so, so was it, I don't remember, 18,000? You know what the transfer was last year?
It was more than 18,000.
Well, what, do you know what it was last year by chance?
It's not 18,000 this year, by the way, it's 36,000.
36,000, 18 out of each one, right?
Right.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So you'd have to discuss that with your parks board and your park superintendent, why he chose to use this fund and then transfer money from the park fund here. If you'd like, we could take all the-
You didn't discuss that with him?
I've discussed it, yes. If you would like me to disclose the emails of these discussions, then I would be more than happy to do that. I have not, I have not agreed with this method from the beginning, and that's, has written documentation that I do not agree with this method. If you do not want to transfer Boo Bash and the Movies in the Park money from parks here, then you can change the fund in which they were spent from.
So that, I just want to know the reasoning.
That way you wouldn't have to do the 18,000 dollar transfer out of the park.
Well, you wouldn't have to do the amount that that amounted to.
I just want to understand the spending, right? And then the funds, just some type of reasoning, if they have good reasoning.
I guess, Joe, if you could ask Michael?
Just would love to hear it, so.
I would ask Michael why.
I'm sure they've thought this through.
If we, if we were to change it, we could reduce the amount that we were doing out of the appropriation, we just can't do more, correct?
You, we could go through, you will not have enough in the parks budget to fund Freedom Fest, but you should have enough to fund Boo Bash and the Movies in the Park.
So we could take that expense out?
So then we would reduce the transfer from the park side.
We could do in, in this.
Which we could do. It would, I would think, what I would end up wanting to happen, you guys, as the council, you guys have approved all of these expenses from the Community Events Fund, okay? If we make that change, what I would propose doing is making a list, presenting it to the park board, since it's a different body, so they know these have been shifted back to your fund in lieu of, of the transfer.
Yeah.
It can't go reappear on a docket because it's already appeared on a docket.
Right.
So it would function very similar to how we did the water bond.
Yeah.
When we shifted that to the water.
And we just do like an MOU or something like that, yeah.
So could we ask Mike just to forward his reasoning for this? That's all, just love to know his thought, right?
And if we can, if we can get that worked out, then let's make the change on the resolution then.
And, and, you know, if Beth was completely in disagreement with it, then he must have had some type of solid reasoning for doing this. I'd just like to know what it is.
Well, we can, we'll have Beth, you and me and Mike will get that figured out.
Yeah, just kind of, just, that would be great.
All right, next one is civil transfer of appropriations. Joe, you want to explain this one?
Beth, you want to go through the transfers for the, the three?
These are just transfers that occur within the same fund in lieu of doing additional appropriations. So if one line contains enough money to support transferring to a negative line, that's how you clean it up and take care of it. So you'll see you're just moving money from, you know, park full-time employees. This was a request Michael had asked to park other services and charges. But it's a same fund transfer, you're just moving money from one line to the next line. It clears a negative somewhere with money you have in that same pocket. You have to have three of them because civil is separate from water district, which is separate from sanitary district. They cannot be on the same resolution.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, next, the, our request for additional appropriations.
So these are the requests for the additional appropriations for the various funds. You have the General Fund for Engineering, 112,637. The Motor Vehicle, CCMG, matched to, for, for 50, 76,000. Riverboat for other equipment, 53,539. Solid Waste for equipment repair, other services and charges, total of 25,000. Local Road and Bridge for 190,138. And the Metropolitan Police Pension for benefits, $2,000.
All right, any questions?
There will be a public hearing on this at the meeting on the, next week, 21st. And that was noticed.
All right.
And that's all I have.
I'll have a motion adjourned.
I've got one, one thing I'd like to give you guys and tell you, that in our last meeting, I, we were talking about the Earl Drive. So Joe, Joe sent out an email that said that there was misinformation, that there is no paperwork that said they have to maintain that road. So I went to the county, I just picked this stuff up today about 3 o'clock, 3:15. I'm going to give you the email that Joe sent out that there was misinformation, and you guys can look at it. On page two of what I'm going to give you, on section two, it tells you that the owners of that property have to maintain it. They have to snowplow, ice removal, repair, replace roadway and curbs. And then on the end, the last word says in perpetuity, which means, I think, forever. So I, I would like to give you that.
Love to see that.
So, but just to let you guys know, I know we disagree on it, but this is the right way to do that. And I didn't appreciate it like, well, I didn't know what I was talking about, so I got that email.
I know it's working great so far, for sure, the road is excellent, so.
Well, hey, the road might not be working that great, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Where is, where does it state this?
On page two. No, that's the first page, that's the email.
Page two of this.
Right here.
This one here?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And last year's transfer, I know you had asked, I pulled it up, twenty-nine thousand six eighty-five and sixteen cents. She transferred from the general fund to your community events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, most, meeting's adjourned.
Take care, RJ.
Take care.
Goodbye, Mr. Shelly, without the seat.
Well, you asked, well, who the grantor is? Grantor is Flint R. Elm. Grant E. is it? Grantor, who's that? It seems to be Edinburgh. It's Grant, Grant E.
That's Ennigenberg, Elm, Elm, two Elms, that's husband and wife, I was doing.
My landlord.
And John, yeah.
Who's this guy?
My landlord.
Landlord.
This, the grantor is this guy?
Nothing wrong with my logic.
His landlord and, his landlord and wife.
This is your landlord?
Yeah.
Is he a nice guy?
He's a older gentleman.
The grantor is this guy? The grantee is this guy? This doesn't seem to be clear. These are between the private parties. Before the signing date, personally appears Flint Arm and. Yeah, but this is not talking, this is not talking about public roadway. This is between private parties. This is why this is a twisted piece of garbage mess. This is, this appears to be between two private parties. Grant E. is Edinburgh.
Ennigenberg. Has nothing to do with the town.
That's what it appears to me too. Has nothing to do with the town. Now they're not, nothing burger. Grantor. Yeah, this is, this is pri, this is not, this is nothing.
Yeah, you're still being recorded.
Yeah, this is nothing.
How do you shut that off?
Well, I don't mind if I'm.